Okay, folks, I think we're ready to get going. Thank you for your patience. The board, welcome to the Chappaqua Central School District Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, January 14th. The board has been in executive session since 5:00 o'clock, so can I have a motion to reopen the public meeting, please? All in favor? Then stand for the pledge of allegiance. Okay, so, welcome back. Welcome to 2025. I'm gonna start the meeting as I always do with my kind of meeting gratitude statement. I'm grateful that school has gotten back off to a smooth start and to everybody involved with that. That includes people like Mario and his facilities crew who've had to deal with some snow and ice, which we didn't really have to do too much of the last couple of years. So, thank you for keeping our facilities open and safe for everybody to walk on and drive on and everything that we needed to be doing here in the last couple of weeks, getting ready to come back. And then also, the board and Dr. Ackerman have been participating in some building coffees and just appreciating parents showing up for that with good questions and then listening to, you know, what's going on with the district, getting those questions addressed. I think it's been a very productive way for us to sort of stay connected to what's happening in each building and it seems like a good model that I hope we can keep going. So, all those are my things I'm grateful for at the moment. On the agenda tonight, just to summarize the major things, we have a guest tonight. Ross is gonna talk about the potential for needing to make any kind of boundary adjustments, as well as to something called the Princeton Plan that you'll hear about. And then we have, it's that time of year to start a little bit on the budget process as well. So, those are the main things, and over to Dr. Ackerman. Oh, should we do the calendar first? Yeah. Before we go to Dr. Ackerman, we have a resolution 1.1.1 to adopt the 25-26 calendar for Chappaqua Central School District. So, can I have a motion to adopt that calendar? Any question or discussion?
So, I'd just like to share, the majority of the feedback that came in from families was around the last day of school. And so, I just wanna take a moment to reiterate, because I know when we send out information, sometimes it gets lost in there. The rating day is set by the New York State Department of Education and it really drives the end date of school. So, there's not a lot of adjustments that can be made by the district as to when the calendar ends. We just need, and I also understand that many of our students, they travel, they go to camps, so we are mindful of that when we plan our end-of-year activities and will continue to do so. So, that's it. And the board had received all the feedback, too, so they were able to review it. So, thank you.
Any other discussion about the calendar? All those in favor? Aye? Okay. Now, over to Dr. Ackerman.
So, as you know, we've been working on a five-year strategic plan and in gathering information from our faculty and from our families, one of the things that we wanted to look at as a district was, at this point in time, whether or not it made sense to redraw the boundary lines of the elementary schools to balance out some of the class-size concerns we were dealing with, although we have addressed that by reducing class sizes in the budget last year and we continue and plan on addressing that in the budget moving forward this year, and whether or not we should reorient our middle schools into a 5-6 and a 7-8 building, which is also known as a Princeton Plan model. And so, I know that when Seven Bridges was designed and built, the district took a look at whether or not it should be reconfigured in that way. The decision at that time was that it did not make sense, but the Strategic Planning Committee and that process felt like, at this point in time, which is about 25 years later, it made sense for us to revisit that conversation to see if, based on where we are now and our unique needs of our community, if we should make an adjustment. And so, I'd like Josh to introduce our guest speaker, Ross, who had the, who we had the opportunity to work with to do this analysis for us.
Sure. So, it's a pleasure to have Ross Haber here. We have been, I've been working together for the past few months on our plan. Ross has been an administrator. He has done these types of studies in many, many school districts across New York State and New Jersey. He has made recommendations to school districts. I have found his work extremely thorough and I'm really happy to hear your presentation tonight. Thanks.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me now?
Okay. There we go.
Good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be up here on this brutally cold night. I come from the south of New Jersey, so it's not quite as bad.[316.22][316.22](Laughter). Depends on you look at it. Anyway, what I wanted to, you have the report, each one of you had a chance to look at the report. It's very long, it takes about an hour and a half to go through. I'm not gonna do that. What I wanna do is, I wanna just kinda go through the highlights of the report, my findings, and then answer or respond to any questions. So, I think the first thing, just to take, take a look at the, go back. Okay, go back to the mission, the actual mission statement, what I set out to accomplish. Well, the first was to do a five-year enrollment projection on a district-wide, a district-wide and individual school basis. That was to see where the district is heading over the next, over the next five years in terms of enrollment. To do a utilization study to determine the current facility utilization, is it being used efficiently? Are enrollments balanced? Are class sizes good? Then to incorporate the projections into the existing instructional space in the elementary and middle schools. By doing that, I take a five-year look at what your class sizes are gonna be, what your instructional space, your classroom utilization, programs and services and things like that. And then, of course, to explore the feasibility of pairing the middle schools into one, into one grade 5 and 6 school and one grade 7 and 8 school. And then to analyze the current elementary school attendance zones with regard to enrollment, balance between each school in terms of space utilization and average class sizes. So, that was the mission. I think a lot of the, a lot of the questions I summarized in the executive summary. Okay, so, it's kind of important to look at where the district has been over the last few years. Well, the enrollment in the district declined from 36, 3600, by the way, just to tell you, enrollment data is based on beds, okay, which is the annual report filed by the school district. So, it's a year-to-year, October to October. So, we're looking at consistency over a year. Anyway, so, the enrollment in the, in the, in the system declined from 3,625 students in 2019-20, which was the base year of the study, to 3,514 students in the 2024 school year, the current school year. It was a decrease of 111 students. So, it's not insignificant in a small school district. The projection through 2930, which is the out year of the projection, is 3,455, which is a further decline of about 59 students. It's marginal. It indicates to me that the district is going through stability. The enrollment is leveling out. I don't see any great increases or decreases over the next five years. And while there's some new residential construction in Chappaqua, it's not expected that this type of residents are gonna, will give any, any significant number of students to the school district that would impact the projections. So, now, in my opinion, and based upon the data, I don't believe that redistricting the elementary schools is warranted now or in the future. The schools look good. They look balanced. They look like they can handle all the kids. They're well within, within capacity. So, I don't, I'm not recommending that you go down that route. Okay, with regard to, with regard to splitting the middle schools into a grade 5, 6 and a grade 7, 8 school, I don't believe that's feasible either for a number of reasons, which I'll get to. Well, here are some of the reasons. Distance, okay? You're going to have kids traveling across the Sawmill River Parkway, kids who live in the north going to schools in the south. They'll be on the buses forever. I don't think that's feasible. And the only way to really make that feasible at all is to add a tremendous number of buses to the system. So, the expense, the travel time, those are the kinds of things I found that just doesn't make it a feasible alternative for the school district. Cost, travel time, and one other little thing. When I was kinda noodling around with it, I took a look at a fourth tier, that maybe that could modify, you know, elementary, high school tier, a middle school tier 1, a middle school tier and an elementary school. Well, a couple of things wrong with that. If you've got a child in the elementary school and two in the middle school and you have two different times, that's, could be tremendously inconvenient. It also adds another transition. So, the kids, instead of going elementary to middle to high school, go to elementary, middle 1, middle 2 and then the high school. And that's, that's just a change. And even though they'll be basically traveling with the same kids, it's still an adjustment to a whole new school building, change in loyalty, you know, feeling for the school, you know, school spirit and that kinds of things. So, based on these factors, I don't see that as a feasible alternative to the school district. And just one other thing, and I missed one of the bullets. To see where the district has been, in the 2010-11 school year, the enrollment was 4,106. That's 592 more students than you have now. So, if you could accommodate 4,106, I don't see where you can accommodate what we're projecting in this, in the system. So, that's kind of the summary of where we're going. Can I, okay. So, I wanted to, what I, okay, so, one of the things I did in this analysis is I mapped the school district. This is a map of the three elementary, current elementary school attendance zones, how they were laid out. And what I did was, I counted, I counted children by geocoding, matching them to the map, counting students in each of these zones, see how they fill the schools, see if there's any need to make any switches or changes. And again, as I said, I didn't see that. But that's, so I mapped the students, counted where they live, counted by grade level, took a look at programs they were in. That was one of the data points that I used. The next slide, these are the middle school attendance zones. Again, they, when I, when I projected them, when I mapped them out and I looked at, they looked, they looked balanced, they looked like there wasn't going to be any tremendous imbalance between the schools and that, one of the things that led to my conclusion. So, moving, moving on. So, just, just to own, to tell you how I did this, after I got the data from beds reports, I used what's called a modified cohort survival method. What the cohort survival method is typical, what typically what school demographers do. How it works is, you project kindergarten by taking live births in the district five years prior to children entering kindergarten and see what the average difference is and then project off that number. And by the way, in New York State, the way live births attract are by school district, which makes it kind of easy to get all the data in. And when I looked at some of the anomalies in your, in your enrollment, I saw that the cohort method for projecting kindergarten didn't work. It was, it was producing large numbers. Your birth rates, your birth numbers compared to your kindergarten enrollment was generating very large percentages, which again, was, would trickle through the school system and create a much larger projection. So, for the kindergarten grade levels, what I did was, I did a moving average. And that was much more consistent with, with the, with the projection, with your kindergartens in the past. So, if you look at your kindergarten history tables and look at the projection tables, you'll see that the numbers are different, but they're consistent. They don't go very high, they don't go very low. For some of the grade levels, and especially considering the COVID year, I had to take out some of the anomalies, some of the very large grade levels and some of the, you know, some of the very large grade levels. So, again, they wouldn't skew the, wouldn't skew the enrollments to a much larger number than was actually going to occur. So, that's the methodology. In terms of, let me just see. Okay? This is, don't even strain looking at, this is a cohort projection table. This is a district-wide projection. You folks have it in your projection book. Anybody wants to see it, I'm sure can get their hands on it, but don't strain your eyes. It's, it's not worth it. Now, the school utilization projections and utilization tables, again, I'll go through a couple. So, this is Douglas Grafflin. The table on the, the table on the left, that's the projection table for this school. As you can see, the numbers are pretty consistent with Grafflin. In fact, it, it, the current school year, total enrollment in the school is 415, the out enrollment is 415. But you can see the fluctuations over the periods of years, but none of them would have a major effect on the, on the actual utilization of the facility. So, that's, sure. Yeah?
Do those factor into?
No, no, because the type they're putting in doesn't really generate a lot of children. So, the fact we meet with three or four children doesn't, wouldn't really make much of a difference in your projection. And we talked about that. Oh, type?
We have parents all over town that have school-aged children.
Yeah, but if you look at that construction, a one-bedroom apartment, a one-bedroom apartment is based on, based on, the fact, based on migration factors, according to both records in the connoisseur, for a one-bedroom, you're talking about maybe a .09 yield on a one-bedroom apartment. And taking into account the level of, the level of the, the price of the apartment, the affordability of the apartment, those kinds of things. Again, my determination in this was it would have a minor impact. I, it's not such a general theme, it's based upon, it's based upon taking a look at comparable, comparable developments in comparable districts. You know, it's not an I-feel kind of thing. It's, it's a, it's a structural thing. Now, if you want, I can go and go back and count the bedrooms in each of the apartments. I can give you the numbers. The numbers over a five-year period are not going to be impactful, but I can take a look at the apartments, I can take a look at, do the bedroom count and do the ratio for each of those bedroom counts. And again, for 100 apartments and depending how many studios, how many one-bedroom, how many two-bedroom, I mean, time, I, you know, units, okay? In terms of units, I could do that count and that count is not going to make a great deal of difference over a five-year period. If there were a lot more apartments, if there was, there was a level of portable units in this district, I'd do that. I have no problem going back and doing the analysis and adding it on to this, but you may be a person who could live in a one-bedroom apartment with three kids, most people don't. And if you take a look at what the migration ratios are, they indicate that.
I guess the reason I asked the question is, Kaylee made the point, these are not one-bedroom apartments, they're reusing a tenant.
Yeah. Can I just add a couple of data points to that? So, I called the real estate agents and I've looked at about a third to a half of them are either under contract or have closed. We've seen seven students in the school district so far in that third to a half of the total of 96 units. While that's not evidence of what might happen in the other. Right, some are in preschool, so, but, yeah, yeah, so that they'll spread out. But the question was asked of the agents of that, and while there are some that are coming into the district that are in preschool and are registering for preschool and, but we have seven who have registered for the district as, that are, that are school-aged or becoming school-aged that are in our system as of this moment.
But again, if you like, if you feel comfortable, I can get, I can, I can get the, the count, the development size, bedroom counts and things like that and apply a number to it and just add it as a, as a footing to the report. Okay? And that's not a problem at all.
Ross, can I just ask you a question that I think that's relevant to what Kaylee and Hillary were just asking? How do you account for the predictability of the turnover of the homes? You know, you said that there were 500 additional students 13 years ago. Logically, for me, I think that those houses are going to turn over to families who are coming in with new kids. Those are now empty nesters, presumably, and they are gonna turn those houses over to families who have young kids. How, you, it's really difficult for you to be able to predict that and, but those numbers would suggest if even half of those families sell, that we're not accounting for 250 additional students that would be coming through the pipeline.
Well, the cohort, the projection, the five-year projection itself, it counts for that. We take a look at the enrollment in.
Ross, just, just remind you to use the mic, because there are people listening.
Oh, okay. Okay. So, the cohort projection actually counts for that. And the way it accounts for that is we take a year-to-year look at the, at the numbers. So, if, if we're seeing an increase in the enrollment in any given year by any amount, that indicates that new people are coming and this is almost a built-out community. There were some new developments, but this is an almost built-out community. So, that indicates what the turnover is for school-aged children. You know, I can't tell you, you know, I can't tell you that 1,000 homes are gonna sell over the next five years and it's gonna generate this kind of thing. What I can do is show you year-to-year change in the, in the growth, excuse me, growth or decline of enrollment, and that counts for the change.
Okay, I guess a simpler way to ask my question then would be, if somehow all of those homes turned over and there was not in your projections and we had 4,100 students again here, would your executive summary read differently?
If those turn, well, if those homes turned over and they're reducing children, of course they would.
No, no, I'm, I'm adding children. I'm taking those homes that had, had their kids in the district and had us at 4,100 in 2011.
Okay.
Those empty nesters all sell to families who now have two kids coming into the district and we get back to the 4,100 number. At that point, would your executive summary read differently as you would say, well, we should redistrict, we should go to the 5, 6, 7, 8 month?
I, if those kids were in, existed in the district and if the projection showed them actually coming in, okay, the answer would be yes, but I, there's no magical way of projecting how many homes are gonna sell over the course of time and how many kids are gonna come into the, into the district. We can have a feeling about it. You know, the median age in the district has increased. So, what does that tell me? It tells me that people are staying in their homes longer, that when the kids, when the kids leave, they hold on to their homes, okay? And, and so, we don't know when they're gonna sell and it's highly unlikely that 500, well, I'm not even saying that, okay? If, if those things were happening, cohort would show, you could come back to me next year and say, God, you were off by 100 kids because 150 homes sold and each one had two kids and that's why this number is so much higher. But the historical enrollment doesn't, has not shown me that. So, I can only base my projections on what I know, not what I, not on what I don't know.
Are you seeing the decrease in enrollment because people are staying in their homes and not selling and turning over as fast as they used to be?
I, yeah, as a matter of fact, just let me look at something, maybe make a point.
Because I was surprised to see that it's declining.
What it is.
Right. I was, we thought it was going the other way, so.[1286.26][1286.26](Laughter).
I just wanna, I just wanna look at something for a second, okay? So, so, the.
Right, but with the new homes and all that stuff coming in.
One of the reasons I didn't use the birth-to-kindergarten ratio, okay, is because your, the births attributed to this district are very low. You know, it went from like 120 to 123 over five years. So, people that are coming in are people that are moving, okay? And so, that's what's generating these numbers, okay? People are moving in. Where does that come from? Either people renting or buying, okay, or selling. So, again, projections really aren't magical, okay? They're just simply based on the data that, that, that you get. So, my best answer to the question goes back to, really goes back to the fact that if you look at a year-to-year, year-to-year measurement and you see the increase or decrease, increase or decrease of students, if people are not coming Chappaqua and living on the street, they're moving into house, right? So, so that's, that's indicative of what's going on in the district.
Ross, and I appreciate your comment on projections are not magical and it's based on data that you have, but then I then wanted to ask you, I guess since we're asking questions already, I took down a few notes as you were going over your executive summary, the numbers increasing, you said, is really not relevant because of the, the decrease in enrollment. But at the same time, I guess our focus is that the increase in numbers, whether they're a lot, a lot to cause an imbalance or, or not, is trending only in one middle school and not the other. So, that's our focus, right? So, that's one. And then, for you to say, no tremendous imbalance, yet we are paying stipends to faculty for having a lot more students in their individual middle school classrooms in one building over the other. So, that is a fact. That is data, that's a fact there. And then, why would you use a different formula, so-called the moving average formula, when you're talking about the kindergarten students? Why wouldn't you use the same to be consistent?
Well, can, when I used the migration ratio, okay, the numbers were very, very highly skewed because you've got a very low birth rate at almost double. Your kindergarten enrollment almost doubles the live births in the districts five weeks, five years, five years earlier. When I looked, when I did that and I looked at the numbers going forward, okay, the numbers in the district got extraordinarily high and they were just not consistent with what's going on in the district. Part of, part of what I, excuse me, part of what I do and I've done for the last 25 years is that I take my experience in terms of districts like Chappaqua, okay? I don't compare you to an inner-city district, I compare you to, in New Jersey we call it DTFGs. In New York State, it's just based upon the socioeconomic status of any community. And I try and say, okay, a condo in Chappaqua will yield so much. A condo in a different area will yield something else. I don't compare the two. So, I try to be consistent in terms of my analysis. Listen, I, first one to admit, okay, there's a science to this, there's an art to this. You get my services because I have the background and experience and I can take a look at things and say, this works, this doesn't. Let, let me address the, the 5, 6, okay? Your argument is valid, okay, that you may be paying, you may be paying stipends to some teachers for some larger classes, part of which is because you offer such a great program here that you've got a lot of subject areas that kids cover. However, let's look at the trade-off, okay? Let's look at the trade-off. Let's, let me go back to.
Wait, I don't understand what, what do you mean, part of it is, because we have great services here? What do you mean by that?
What I'm saying is that you, with the declining enrollment, okay, you may have to expand programs, right? You create more instructional.
No, we're not paying stipends because there's extra programs. It's just, they're in their regular 5, 6, 7, 8 classrooms.
Okay, so.
They just happen to be in one middle school and not, it's not happening in another because...
It's 100 more kids and.
Yeah, I don't know the exact number.
I wanna, it's, okay, what, what weighed in my decision? Oh, gosh. And we'll get to the utilization, we'll get to the utilization table in a minute, okay? But let's look at one thing that weighed in my recommendation, okay? Well, two or three things that weighed in my recommendation. Do I have a pointer on here? Do I have a pointer on this? This one? Okay, all right. So, you're a fifth grader living here, okay? And you attend Seven Bridges. Now, you become a seventh grader and you move to the school down here, okay? So, my prediction would be the, it would be tremendously, tremendous increase in cost and transportation. Maybe one of the ways to avoid that is to add a fourth tier, okay? Have a middle school A and a middle school B. But then, you'd be going on a four-tier system, right? And you would have kids transitioning, transitioning instead of elementary, middle and high school, elementary, middle 1, middle 2 and high school. So, I don't, I don't find that beneficial to those. But the most, the biggest thing I'm concerned about is really yours road network, the fact that I was just told by somebody that it could take 11 minutes to cross this Sawmill River Parkway at the lights, that, you know, I've kinda seen it. So, the, is, is the amount of travel time and the expense of transportation worth the trade-off? That's the question. That's for you guys to decide.
Right, but those are questions we had before we hired you.
Okay. And I'm, and I'm answering them by saying that I don't think it's feasible. Let, let me go to the middle school, let's go to the middle school utilization tables. So, okay. So, this is Robert Bell Middle School, okay? The enrollment went from 617 to 589, so it declined somewhat over the last, it declined somewhat over the last five years, okay? The projection is that it's gonna go from the current 589 to 564. So, you've been, so you've lost, what, 40 kids between 2019-20 and 2024-25 and just, you know, a number more, another, what, 25 kids in that group. The point is that that's the enrollment in the school, that's the enrollment for the kids that live in that green area. Now, let's look at the other middle school. Oh, let's go back to, sorry. So, this table is utilization. So, what this is showing is the average, average number of kids in a home on a grade level base, when the current school year, well, the projection for next year, and I gotta move closer, sorry, is that you would have fifth grade, just a little over 24 kids in a class, sixth grade 21, seventh grade 22, eighth, sixth and eighth grade 25, okay? And if you take, if you take and compare, so, you're using three R, three music rooms in a building, spray, there are eight science labs and there's a total of 14 dedicated rooms. The total rooms used is 39, there are 46 rooms available, but it's a net of seven rooms that could be used at discretion as a principal. I don't know what programs they are, they could be resource, they could be making space, they could be whatever, but you've got seven net rooms. If you go down to the rest and see that number fluctuation from 7, 6 and 5. So, space in Robert Bell Middle School doesn't appear to be, to me, based on what you're disparate.
You have to talk into the mic and you can shut up and they can't hear you.
I'm sorry?
When you shut up, people can't hear you.
All right, so what I'm saying is that, what I'm, you know what, I'll read off my 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 paper here. So, Robert, the Robert Bell Middle School, it went from six thou- six hundred and seventeen students in two thousand nineteen, twenty. To five hundred eighty-nine students in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. So trend was downward in the school building. Okay, the trend is, it the trend is stable, but it's going to go down to five, again, according to my projections, down to five hundred and sixty-four. So the 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 trend is not upward, the trend is downward. Now, if we go to the utilization table, which is this, all right? Uh, and we take a look at the projected enrollment for next year, which would be five hundred and eighty-five students. We're looking at homerooms, because remember, middle school is a little different. The kids take different, different course, they work on a schedule that. So what I do is I just wanted to create, take a look at homeroom numbers. So the home numbers, um, for grade five next year are 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 twen- are just a little over twenty-four. Grade six is just a little over twenty-three, grade seven is just, is about twenty, just a little over twenty-two. And grade eight is twenty-five. If we go out to the end of this, we're still looking at the same number of homes. At the end of the projection. So again, what this, this does not tell me about. Doesn't tell me about, uh, lack of space in the school building, which is what, you know, I would need to know now. One of the things that was not in this assignment was take a look at faculty assignments. That was not part of the study. Um, so I don't know why, you know, I don't know what the, what the circumstance is that. Teach and that teachers are having to pay the stipend. I I just don't know what that is. We can talk a little bit about that. Now, if we look at, let's go to the other, let's look at Seven Bridges. Okay, so Seven Bridges is had five hundred and fifty-nine students in two thousand nineteen. Uh, it had five hundred and one students at the opening of school year. And understand, the tables on the top are real numbers. They're not projected numbers. Those are actually your beds' numbers, okay? So now we go look at the projection. We're going from five oh one to about five thirty-two. So again, marginal increase, but no greater than it was in 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 two thousand nineteen or twenty. So let me.
And Ross, if I'm not mistaken, in effect, the two middle schools are going to get a little closer together and and they're they're going to get a little closer together in terms of the, right now, they're. They've got maybe a hundred students difference and we're going to close that. It sounds like maybe you're expecting that to close down somewhat.
Yeah, that's true, but also when you think about it, what's the hundred student difference causing, causing? Causing in the buildings, okay? And is that going to filter out as this shows, it's going to filter out over time? So again, the way it is, do you make? A significant change which will, and again, this has to go to me as both a teacher and a building principal. And a consultant and a grandfather, you know, that I don't want my kids riding on a bus for forty-five or fifty minutes, which I. I've got a lot of experience in transportation stuff. That's what this tells me, okay? So, and that, and you know, you can fix any problem by throwing money at it. So let's say you needed fifteen, I did, it's fifteen buses to do the five, six, seven, eight, okay? Now, let's say that you use fifteen buses, okay? And this is creating one-hour car rides. I'm not, haven't measured it, so don't panic, but it's causing one-hour bus rides. To cut that down, maybe we have to add ten more buses, okay? I mean, so again, any problem is fixable, it's, is it logical, okay? Um, and you know, to address your question, would you rather pay some stipend if you have to, as opposed to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar a year school bus? Which is what the average cost of a school bus is.
Ross, do you think it would be helpful too? Because I I hear you really clearly, and I think everyone here is that the elementary schools moving the boundaries doesn't make sense in terms of enrollment. And I know that last year we were definitely paying, um. Uh, stipends to middle school teachers for overages. This year, because of the way we budgeted, we're in a better place, but. I understand the concern that Bell is serving more students than Seven Bridges. And if we change our resources in a way where we reorient ourselves, will we save money on resource to offset the costs? But I do believe in one of your slides, you talk about not only transportation, but the impact of transitions on kids. So maybe we could move to that slide to talk about it a little bit more. And I also want to share that we'll push all your demo, all your slides are going to be pushed out to everybody. Um, in the community in the week, so everyone can see all your slides and your data and your graph. I think what we're really grappling with is, um, logically, in a lot of ways, it might make sense to reorient five, six, seven, eight. Um, but in other ways, financially and logistically, it really doesn't make sense. And that's why your recommendation is, um, strongly not to do it. I think the one I'm really looking at right now that would be helpful maybe to pull up is slide twenty-nine. Or maybe even there. Okay, go ahead, sorry.
I'm sorry, which side do you want to go to?
Well, slide twenty-nine is where you really talk about like your opinion and and you go a little bit beyond transportation about what the problems are. Before you get, and then you can launch into, then you kind of go into like transportation and school start time. So maybe we could start with twenty-nine and move forward if that's okay with everyone.
Looking at parent.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, it's very action-starter, but it's, it's okay.
Okay, sorry.
PowerPoint sometimes does funny things with numbers, but anyway, okay, so let's talk about, so this slide does talk about the pairing, okay? So again, I say, in in my opinion, I don't believe that pairing the middle schools would be feasible for the Chappaqua Central School District. And here are the reasons, okay? One, you're current, and it's something you should be proud of, that you're currently one of the highest performing school districts in New York State. So performance, you know, so there's no issue with making changes to, um. Increased performance of kids, okay? And I don't believe that there's any, if you paired the schools, it wouldn't change any, um, any of the achievements of the children, their their student performance. Okay, this is one that's important, though, and you got to think about it. It creates a fourth transition for students by adding, eh eh adding one of the middle schools. Although parent schools are really a single school in two locations, in our experience, this has been one of the main concerns of parents in school districts who have worked with. Have worked where pairing, school pairing was considered. Think about it, you can't conceivably transport. You'd be sending buses to the seven, eight school, into the five, six area, buses from the five, six area into the seven, eight school. You'd have crossing of buses, you'd have, you know, you'd have, you'd have a child at a, think about it, you have a fifth grader. And a seventh grader. So now, if there are two different bell schedules, that's a problem. Uh, if they're on the same bus schedule, you've got buses just crossing over each other, adding a tremendous amount of traffic to the school district at that particular time. Right? Because instead of being confined to an area, there's a lot of crossing of the highway. So can you imagine you get ten more buses to cross a highway at the traffic lights? You know, again, these are, you know, these are 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 actual, and by the way, I got to add something. I've got nothing against the Princeton Plan. I've seen it work success successfully, okay? I have. I've seen it more successfully on the elementary school level, okay? And where there are a lot of reasons for doing some, years ago was for racial balancing, others it's for school performance. So I've seen that. So I mean, so it's not an knock on the Princeton Plan, it can be very effective. The question is, what's the value, what's the, what's the return on investment? What's the ROI in this school district for doing that? Is it going to benefit the children in any particular way? So the other thing, it appears that both.
Ross, can I just also add, as some of our work around gathering feedback from families? Uh, we did, uh, the strategic planning committee called Random Middle School Parents. And one of the themes that we uncovered in those conversations was concerns around the transition from fourth to fifth grade. And we've also seen that in our data and we have worked on trying to address some of the concerns that we noted. Um, around student performance and transition. So I think in addition to the transportation issues with kids going from. Four to five and then seven, um, six to seven in a different building. There are some social, emotional, academic concerns that we also have that we're thinking about, that kind of connect to what you're saying. So I'm sorry, keep.
No, no, yeah, listen, there's, there's a thousand reasons for doing something, there's a thousand reasons for not doing something. For example, that is it, is it, are five and six students a better pairing than five and eight students, right? I mean, do you want, okay, but then by the same token, a fourth grade students, a good fit for kindergarten students. I mean, you can, you know, and I've heard those arguments always, okay? So the question is, what's the practical, what is the actual practical result? I think that what I'm hearing is one of the goals of doing this was to balance the schools. But if the projections are showing that they're going to, then that you lose that. So then what's the gain? You know, what's the, I I just can't see putting kids on a school bus for that long a period of time. And again, not only do you have the, you know, I use the crossing of the Soreno River Parkway because that's so obvious. What about all these little hilly, whiny roads? I mean, you can't, you don't have corner stops in the district, right? So basically, you're picking up kids, almost everybody at half stop. So if stopping, so you're stopping a bus, let's say you put thirty kids on a bus, okay? And the trap, the actual over-the-road travel time, let's say, is thirty-five minutes, then you add two minutes per stop. You know, it's, these are the practical reality, you know, I try and deal in practical realities of what of of what's going on. I think that, um, you know. And and so I think that that's where I'm coming from, yeah.
If I may, um, I I I don't want to interrupt, but I do want to just make a clarification that we do have corner stops. I am at one of a corner stop, so it's not true or accurate that every bus stops at every house in the district. And normally, the regular-sized buses do not go on highways or cross highways, just just so that. We have the same information. I I could be wrong, I could be wrong, but smaller buses do, but not the big ones.
In the scenario, buses will have to cross Soreno River Parkway. In the five, six, seven, eight, they will have to cross Soreno River. And you talk, and I don't know what the exact bus count is, but if you're talking twenty-five or thirty buses to accomplish this, or fifteen or twenty buses. That is a lot of time. No, I know that you've got corner stops in the district, but you've got all places, we've got hazardous roads, curves, hills.
Yes.
Those there, you don't, those not, I I won't, I haven't counted them, but I'll bet you the count will be much higher than you think.
Well, I just want you to present to us all the sides, because I feel like this report is. It's sort, you're presenting it in only one way. I mean, we know what the outcome is, we know what you're trying to recommend, and I appreciate that, but I just also want you. You, like you said, there's a thousand different ways for doing something and there's a thousand ways why you wouldn't do something. So I I would want you to present both sides.
I I have to, I have no, I have no. I have no stake in this, okay? As a, that's why you hired me. I have absolutely no stake in this. So I didn't, I'm not presenting this in any prejudicial way. I mean, what is the counterargument? And I'd be willing to hear it, the counterargument for what I'm saying about the split. You know, what, you know, that that it's, I don't know what the, I don't know, if I, if I, by the way, if I looked at it and I found ten or fifteen crossings. I'm just using the example, I don't want to pick on Soreno River Parkway, it's a perfectly lovely road. But, um, if if I were, if I were, you know, if I looked at that and I said there were a lot of opportunities for crossing, well, that may change my mind, but, okay? Or if I, if you had more neighborhoods, I'm I'm talking, you know, development neighborhoods where you've got, you know, um, grids. Where kids can walk to a corner and you have more of that, that might change my argument. None of that exists in the school district, okay? None of it does. So, so, so again, my first thought was, do you have capacity to do this? No, do you have the capacity to stay the way you are? My projections, the utilization tables, the facility management stuff indicates that you really do, okay? So that's, and that's solely how I make, it's only my recommendation, I mean, um, the, uh, so. Anyway, going back to the the bullet here, it appears that both middle schools have adequate space to accommodate the current grades, grade level structure. I don't see a problem with that. Uh, demographically, there's not appeared to be a socioeconomic reason for pairing the schools. Um, so in my opinion, and it's my opinion based on the data that I've developed. That the transportation would financially and 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 practically prohibited. And what I mean practically, it's, it's people with kids in multiple schools, adding a fourth tier, that kind of a thing. I think that that, those are the kinds of things that that are more disruptive than helpful. So, and I, you know, I know, hopefully going, you know, and I, as I said to you before, it's, there are many reasons for. You know, for considering something like this, but again, what's the, what's the return on investment? What benefit are you getting for what you're doing? And that, that's the question you guys have to answer. You can do this, okay? Absolutely can do this, um, but why?
Right, and I think in, I have it at slide twenty-five, but I, it's probably a different slide up there. I mean, you do talk about the rationale for why we wanted to initially look at this in the first place. Continuity of instruction, uh, certification areas, um. Building a sense of community that that's developmentally appropriate, all of those things was drive, were driving the questions behind. If we could and if we should, but I I hear you clearly saying transportation is a, is a significant barrier right now at this time. I think one of the things I'm also thinking about, and we have a transportation task force looking at electric busing, that's such an unknown for us. Um, a shift of this magnitude with that unknown, um, might be hi- highly problematic and something that warrants like deep consideration of the board.
Sure. Did people want to ask other questions or people feel like they've?
Yeah, I just have one more, I'm I'm simultaneously, okay? I'm doing, I've just finished a study of Carmel, okay? And Carmel, what Carmel wanted to do is they wanted to move the fifth grade out of their five, eight school. Into the elementary schools and create a pure middle school. And every argument in the world educationally was good for them for that. The only problem they had, no space, zero space.
So that was my question, do we have the space?
I believe, yes, absolutely. I think I, I think you have enough space, you know, listen, ten years from now, I don't know. But I mean, certainly, this, this, what you have is sustainable. I know a minimum of five years and probably significantly more than that, you know, and and, uh, and going back to your earlier question. It's highly unlikely, um, giving, it it basically given price points in this community, that you can sell five hundred homes over the next five years.
Well. I I I don't know I'd make that statement, but what I would ask you, tapping into your career as an administrator. Do you feel, and and when you made the comparison between having a kindergartner and a fourth grader in the same building and the fifth to eighth grader? I think those are apples and oranges. I don't think that that you can make that comparison. So would you feel if we had the space, going back to a K through five model and a six through eight model would make sense? Would we have the space to do that and would it make sense to you?
Well. Best answer for that is, i- is exploring it something that's worthwhile? Yes, do, is it, is it doable? I don't know.
Yeah, we didn't ask.
But the only difference would be, the only difference, if you had a, if you had a, a six, eight school, a six, eight middle school, right? You wouldn't have, you would have your sixth grade, your your kids all picked up at the same stop at the same time. Now, whether that would cut down on transportation, I don't know, but think about that. In this case, you've got five, six kids being picked up, seven, eight kids being picked up. If you just had five, six kids going to one play, to two different schools, you had five, if you had six, eight kids going to one school.
No, no, that, that's not what I'm saying. I I'm saying, as is, every fourth grader who goes to Roaring Brook attends Roaring Brook for fifth grade. And then they either go in sixth grade to Seven Bridges or to Bell, whichever middle school they're assigned to. That, that's what I'm asking. Do the buildings current, as currently comprised, the elementary buildings, would. Would it be feasible to have a K through five model inside those three buildings?
I, I'm not, I won't answer the question after the data, okay? Is it feasible? You know, I don't, I don't know. Um, I think that.
Because that, that answers your, the question that you had prior to this, which is. For me, my biggest reticence with sending a fifth grader to middle school is that they're in the same building as an eighth grader. And I I think the differential between fifth and eighth grader, and I, and again, I'm the only one up here who hasn't had to deal with this transition yet. So I might be more fearful of it than I need to be, but fifth grader in a school with an eighth grader makes me slightly uncomfortable. Now, it's obviously proved itself out to be successful, but that's, that is my question, what I'm asking, is K through five extending those buildings?
Let's, let's look at this, without me breaking down the actual number of kids. If you look at Graffling, Graffling has.
It's got five or six unused rooms, so in theory, yes, you could do it.
The net number of rooms, okay? Graffling, five, 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 six, five over the years. So if you needed two sections of fifth grade. Or three sections of fifth grade.
Well, you need, you need four.
You do it, right?
You need four minimum, yeah.
So if you do that, then what that does, it reduces the flexibility in the school building.
Right, that, I I I read, I know that there is available rooms. As an past administrator, would you recommend that and then giving yourself a lot less flexibility inside the building to have flex rooms?
I would absolutely, given the amount of rooms you have, you know, because, you know.
That, 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 that.
That's, the answer is no, okay?
Probably we don't have enough data for you to discuss it, but, so. There has been talk, as long as I'm here, we just have that here, about developing the downtown area residential. It may or may not ever, um, but it's something that's definitely being spoken about. And obviously, the way that we're currently zoned, all of that housing would be zoned for one elementary school and one middle school.
Okay.
Is there? If they point to you where we, this, because. a tipping point to you where we, this, because you've clearly said to us, wait, no, we don't have a problem. Great. Is, is there a tipping point to you, looking at the data we have, where you say there's a point where you're gonna have a problem, and it's X number of units, or is it X, is it based on kids, is it?
Well, it's based on, it's based on a lot of things. Let's look at the Grafflin thing for me, okay? Okay, so if I get influx of kids in Grafflin, using, now we're being loose theoretically, okay? We get an influx of kids in Grafflin. So now, Grafflin has a lot of individuals going in, and it's people who have room sets, so, the net profit. My tipping point would be when I announce like one or two of them. Okay, I mean, that would say to me that I, I, as a, listen, I was, as a principal, we're just a little principal senior, okay, we hide rooms. So why, and why we hide rooms? We hide rooms because we want to use them for specific programs, okay? I assume that you, that you use some of these rooms that are in the, the small group construction. Some of those groups are that, rooms are that. You don't want to take that flexibility away, right? Or a teacher comes up with a wonderful idea for robotics room. Okay, you don't want to take that flex, I want to say you can't do it because I know. I mean, that's emotional, but that's, you know, again, that's the experiential part of all of this. Okay, so.
Other questions, or?
One, um, you were talking about, I think it was two thousand eleven, we were like at four thousand kids, give or take, and, and you don't foresee us getting back there, but you made a point to say, even if we did get back there, we were doing it in two thousand eleven, so we could do it again. And in my head, I was just thinking about a lot of spaces that we have in the buildings now that didn't exist in two thousand eleven, like, you know, eye labs and steam rooms and greenhouses and things that, um, just are taking up space now that back then might have just been empty classrooms. So I didn't know if that came, if we ended up back at four thousand kids, but we still obviously have all of those rooms of innovation. I know we have flex rooms, like you're saying, five in each building, but they're not necessarily just empty, full-sized classrooms.
No, to me, one, one of the advantages of a declining enrollment, as long as it doesn't get to a point, we have a hundred eighty kids into six hundred capacity school building, but one of, one of the advantages of, of a moderate decline, as, as this district has seen, is that you, you create space for more programs. So when you had the four thousand kids, you probably didn't have a hot house. You probably didn't, you, you know, you probably didn't have the kinds of things that these schools have been used. That's, that's the flexibility I'm talking about. Going back to tipping point question, when you no longer flip, when you no longer have flexibility, that's when you tip.
Going once, going twice. Okay, Ross, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ross. I know that was a really complicated presentation and study, and I want to thank Ross and Josh for working together to gather all the data and be able to present it in a way that we can make sense of it, and I, I think the strategic planning committee should go back and look at the presentation, and then we should talk about it at a, at a future meeting as to, you know, how you'd like us to plan forward based on Ross's analysis, so, thank you.
Any questions that come up, please, Josh, to Josh, get to me and I'll, I'll answer them, but I think that, you're right, this is very, very complex, okay, and I wish you a lot of luck.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate the questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we're gonna move into the, thank you, Ross, good night, we're gonna transition. And then we'll send out Ross's presentation and, um, the clip of this presentation on Sunday. And so now we're gonna move into the community update, and then Josh and I will do a very brief overview of the budget. All right, so, um, Happy New Year, welcome back. I want to, I hope our families had a nice holiday break. And so, um, on the agenda tonight, we wanted to highlight a few items, but before I want to do that, I know there's been a lot of, um, media coverage on regionalization. And so, um, and, and Hillary and Kelly had the opportunity to go and listen to the Commissioner of Education about, before the break, about this initiative in the state. And, you know, there's been different reactions across the, our state from school boards and school districts around whether or not districts want to participate in this initiative. And there's been a deadline of January fifteenth, twenty twenty five, of notifying the, the state as to whether or not we, we, we refuse to participate, and some, some school boards have been passing resolutions to that effect. And so I just want to share with you that, you know, our, our collective position, and of course, we can certainly, um, adjust, is I don't see any, uh, harm in engaging in conversations with my colleagues across the area about ways we could potentially share services. And I put a few examples of things that I would like to engage in conversations with them about, like special education, safety and security, mental health, electronic bus regionalization maybe, professional development, pre-k services, extracurricular activities, so I would like to be at the table when these conversations are happening, and I, and I, but to, to pass a resolution saying we're not gonna be at the table, I think would not be in the best interest of the district. And we're not committing to money or, or any, anything financially to, um, to be in a process around these conversations, and so, uh, well, I can maybe understand the fear associated with committing to potentially being in conversations and not understanding what that, the outcome of those conversations could look like. I, I feel the benefits of potentially sharing services around some areas that I know that we would benefit of, from outweigh the potential fear of the unknown around maybe a, a process, a rollout process from the state that could have been a little bit better. And, and so, um, I also want to share, like, there's this upload, people have to upload information into the system by January fifteenth. It was actually due in October, and we did it in October. So I, you know, I, I, I think if they could maybe go back, they might have done things a little bit differently, but I, I feel like in spite of potentially, um, a rollout that maybe wasn't the best, and I, I would like us to have a seat at the table to talk about maybe some ways that we can share some services that would benefit us, knowing that we have control over whether or not we're gonna participate and allocate any funding towards that. Plus, um, our, our BOSI superintendent has expressed to us that there could be some, um, monies to support some of these initiatives, which would also benefit us in, in a different way, so. That's, that's my thoughts on it. I didn't know if any of the board wanted to kind of weigh in on this, but I, I would like to have a seat at the table.
Yeah, I think it makes sense to have a seat at the table, and just to be clear, you know, I think it's worth clarifying, as you just did to the community, that taking this first step and participating in the conversation phase of the project, of the, I don't even know what this is, project initiative, does not lock us in or commit us in any way to actually doing any of the things discussed at the table. But it, it doesn't make sense to let all of our neighboring districts have a conversation about things that could potentially benefit us and not participate in that conversation. If the conversation's going away that we say this doesn't make sense for Chappaqua, whether it's financial or any other reason, we don't have to move forward with it, but it would seem silly to not at least participate in that conversation, especially if my understanding is that you can ultimately, it'll be like a menu, and if there are places maybe like electric busing where it makes sense for us to participate, we could do that and not participate in other areas. So I think it would be silly to not at least be part of this initial process.
So my takeaway from the Commissioner's Town Hall, I don't know, and correct me if I'm wrong, was that the conversation is actually mandated to be part of the process is voluntary, and we can opt out of being part of the regionalization process, and I put that in air quotes because they did, from the very beginning of the conversation at the Town Hall, own up to the fact that they branded it poorly, and that they shouldn't have named it regionalization because it's not really what it is, and the reason for it coming, for initiating that at the beginning was because COVID funds have run out for a lot of districts, but it really doesn't impact us anyways because we didn't get any funds. So, again, to be at the table for conversation, I heard it as everyone must be engaged in conversation, but we opt in or out of whatever we decide in terms of consolidation.
Yes, so the strategy that other districts have been taking is they're passing resolutions and opting out of the conversations. Like that, so I, you know, that's, that's part of the, um, the confusion around the process.
I, and, and, and you're right about there's huge confusion. I think everybody who was in the room, there were superintendents, there's board members, directors of everything, and everybody was confused and had a different definition of what they understood, and, but I think one thing I would like to say to the community is that we shouldn't fear, um, anything. It, it's, it's okay to be in conversation and to listen to other people and thinking about it, because if we're not at the table, then not only do we not have an opportunity to hear from other neighboring districts that might be dealing with the same things as us who don't have aid, but we don't get to be heard. That's my biggest concern, is that we won't be heard, and that's a loss for our district. So, I think, again, I think the, it's kind of, I thought it was a little interesting, funny, in that they mandated the conversation, but you can opt out of the process.
I agree with everything that Kelly and Hillary said. I'll just keep you posted on the, on the process, because this is, the first deadline's tomorrow, and then our BOSI superintendent's supposed to start scheduling meetings.
It's just odd the way that they framed it at the beginning was, this is mandated, this is happening unless you opt out, and now it's all of a sudden a menu of like, choose your own adventure. I, I feel like that's a, an interesting shift.
There seemed to be some confusion even amongst the people presenting the information, um, as to some of what was happening. I think, though, that, that some of the initial fear was that the initiative was meant to take away local control, and that's not the objective here at all, and I think that that, it's, it's more of a, are there places where it makes sense to pool resources? Not that there is a lot of.
The original framing of it was not that.
Also, I, I don't want to put a, a resolution, and there's an opt-out resolution from you, I'm, I'm not comfortable with it. So I, I just don't want to present something to you that I don't feel fully comfortable with.
Right, and to be honest, the board has not had any conversations around this, so we're not opting out of something without having conversation about it.
And I think just so people in the audience can know, we already do use BOSIs and pool our resources for purchasing and other things with other districts, so this is not an unheard of thing to do, and we've already, we're already doing it with, through BOSIs in a lot of places.
So out of this confusing process, perhaps there's some opportunity for us with our neighbors, so that's what we'll see. Okay, thank you. And then, um, Adam, did you want to talk about the Instagrams on the agenda?
Yes, thank you. So you'll see item five point twenty, um, productive game groups. Uh, this is a CSF Instagram written by Sarah Gerbino. She's one of our West Richard Special Education teachers, so this will be an opportunity for students to engage in some good, good old fashioned board games with a, with a kind of learning spin to them, and you can think of these things for some of the flexible time that students have indoor recess, things like that. So, um, this was granted to us by the CSF, so we thank them for that.
And then Josh, we have a number of, um, resolutions about the capital project, so.
So all but one of the resolutions were previous bids that were awarded for phases two and three, so these are the contracts and the AIA documents that need to be signed by the board. And then we could almost immediately start beginning work on the athletic pavilion, um, and then putting our schedule together for the spring and the summer to complete the rest of the HVAC projects and the J-Bridge project. What is new is the tennis court lighting, uh, contract is on there from Musco, and that bottom is a rendering from them of another project they did, that's high intensity, low bleed LED lighting, that they're gonna be installing on our tennis courts.
And then I just wanted to just provide a calendar update, so of course, we have our, our principal coffees coming up that Ryan had mentioned that I'll be participating in with members of the board. And then I wanted to just highlight on Thursday, we have a, a work session here, and we've been working on the in, um, the IB program at Life School, so they're gonna be coming and presenting to the board some of their work, and then we're also gonna have an overview of some of what the strategic plan thing committee has been thinking about in terms of whether or not we want to explore that moving forward, and it'll be an opportunity for the, for the board to have a, a learning session alongside one of their, uh, professional experts, and then to hear from some of our faculty who have been in, um, IB school districts prior to coming here, and then of course, hear, uh, about the Life School program, which many of our parent, families are aware of because they've had info sessions moving into next year, but it'll be, it's, it's, it's gonna be a learning session, so people are welcome to attend. Um, and then, of course, we have our, our traditional, um, we're, I can't even believe it, we're starting to get oriented for next year, so there'll be opportunities for our families to start coming in and learning about what next year is gonna look like for our kids. And so now, uh, Josh and I are gonna do an overview of the budgets, little preview. Um, and so, uh, the first thing we're just gonna share is the budget calendar, it's the same, every year we start developing the budget in fall, and then between now and the adoption date, we have multiple presentations and certain actions that we need to take to prepare, uh, the budget for voter consideration on May twentieth. You can see that we have, um, an anticipated presentation date of March twenty sixth, where we would, uh, share with you the board that, the board, the budget we're recommending for adoption, and then, um, our hearing would be on May seventh with the vote on Tuesday, May twentieth. And when we are developing the, the budget, we're anchoring in your three strategic plannings, the first is being fiscally responsible, first question. The second is, um, making sure that we're providing the, an excellent academic, um, experience for our students in our district K through twelve, and then the third is supporting the social and emotional development of our students. And so, um, in, in this, in, in the budget too, we also make sure that we are addressing our strategic priorities, and while we're not gonna get into that too deeply tonight, we're gonna highlight a few of them that you'll see in the upcoming budget presentations. When we do our component sections of the budget, we're gonna talk about, um, how we use the strategic plan to drive some of the decisions that we've made, but we're also gonna be sharing at the next meeting our progress of our three fellowships over the course of this half a year as we plan forward for the future, and that's our reading fellowship, our district equity team, and our strategic planning fellowship. And so our commitment in this budget is that our students are at the center of every decision. It preserves and expands our academic and social and emotional program, and it maintains the class sizes that were in line with last year's budget. We know that's very important to our families. Um, we're prioritizing our infrastructure, we're mindful of our residents who have expressed concerns about their property taxes, and again, that we're aligned to, um, what we've identified as our priorities in the strategic plan. And then there's four major portions of the budget that really derives what the budget looks like. The first is our, our program, the second is class size, the third, our infrastructure needs, and then the fourth is contractual obligations. So now I'm gonna transition over to Josh, who's gonna talk about.
So, well, first, first start talking about the budget to budget history. You could see our average budget to budget increases have been two point three six percent over the last seven years, and the average tax levy increase has been about one point nine percent. Having last year's tax levy increase of, uh, one point eight one one percent, with a one point seven seven percent budget to budget, uh, increase. These have been very stable, um, a little fluctuation in the budget to budget versus the tax levy. Those all due to increasing use of fund balance or changes in state aid. Next slide, um, just to sort of a reminder of the New York State property tax cap is calculated that in order to have a simple majority vote, um, our tax levy increase with, is capped at CPI or, which is two percent, and then there's a few other additions and subtractions that are in there, including the tax-based growth factor, there's allowable exclusions in there for mostly for capital expenditures, some reductions based on building aid. If the district were to exceed the tax cap, um, it would need sixty percent or more of voter approval. If the, um, tax cap budget is voted down lower than fifty percent, we either put it up for another vote or go to a contingency budget, which needs to be at or below next year, this past year's tax levy. We actually have a significant amount of information, um, that has built the basis of the budget already. We know our projected enrollments for next year, um, our administrators, clerical, and our custodial contracts were all settled last year. We already know that our, in ERS, which is our clerical and custodial, retirement will increase by one three point three percent, so a modest increase. That's gonna be offset by the TRS will have a decrease, currently it's at ten point one one percent, and they estimate between nine point five and ten percent, so we have a fewer in, in ERS than TRS, that's gonna balance itself out, so it's basically flat in retirement contributions for next year. We know our debt service coming up, um, we've received our assessment growth factor, it's not zero this year, it's point five three percent. Um, and that's attributed to, we have some growth in our community. So that gives us a little bit of room within the tax cap. We, our health insurance premium. We our health insurance premiums are only going up three point nine percent, which is below any other previous year. Um and we estimate due to CPI being above two percent, that will be capped at two percent for the tax cap. So those are known impacts. Things that we don't know yet are the official tax cap number. Once we start developing that. The first runs of it are estimating our tax tapping around two point one percent. Um with the the two percent tax cap, our growth factor and exclusion, it's and inclusions, um and that could fluctuate slightly. Um we are um our CCT contract, our teacher's contract ends uh ends this year, so we'll be negotiating with them. We do not know our state aid allocation. We know that the Rockefeller report just came out. There was some good news for Chappaqua and some bad news for Chappaqua in there. Um so the governor just gave her state of the state address. She's now going to put those runs together and put the state aid projections together for next year. We're assuming they're going to be about flat unless some other decision is made at the governor or or legislative le- level. Um our transportation costs we know about, but some specialized placements and things like that are going to fluctuate. Our special education placements, we don't know yet. It's still a little bit too early. Um the full, the next two bit pieces are what affect your actual tax rates, not the budget. But what the assessed tax valuations are um for the for the communities and the utilization rate rates we don't have just yet. So those are unknowns. Um so if we start to look at what a levy limit budget looks like. Um we at in building the budget, I've met with the finance committee three times. We've talked about everything from our insurance premiums to our fund balances to a five year strategic plan for finances. Um and along with a whole host of other things you're going to see as recommendations throughout the budget process.
Josh, say who's on that.
So we have three community members that are on that committee, um and they're all community members that were had applied and. Came upon that committee. So and we've met three times roughly every other month right now.
So Josh, may I just add, so we're we're going to talk more about this when we go into the budget more detail. But just so people understand, we're we're not, we're not going to be recommending a budget over the levy limit. And based on um the work that our strategic planning committee has been engaged in and our DET, we have some. Advancements that we're going to be suggesting in our budget. Um presentation to address some needs that we've identified as a district. So we are maintaining all of our current academic programming, our extracurricular programming, our staffing patterns. Um but we're also looking at like we're continuing to evolve our safety and security. We uh we know that there's been some concerns about being able to support seventh and eighth grade math. And we're thinking about that and adding a position to support AIS services. So it's during the day, just like we did for elementary. Uh we are coming uh forward with a recommendation for elementary world language and we'll talk about that at our next meeting. And then we'll have those in our budget presentations. Um we know that it's very important to our high school families that uh we support our academic teams. And in a in a similar way that we support our athletic teams, so we're prioritizing that in our budgeting process. I can't talk too much about that because that's a part of negotiations, but we do uh we are thinking about that as we budget. And then we do um have in there our 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 BOSI's closer to support our Northwell Hospital partnership. Because I know that's been really important to our community as well and we've received some feedback on that. So even though we normally come out with this in the in the uh the budget presentation in March, I felt like I just wanted parents to know. We heard you, we're thinking about these things, we're doing this work in the strategic plan. And right now, based on what our budget is projected to be, we feel like we're going to be able to support these things. As we prepare our budget for your consideration. Okay, go ahead, Josh.
So um just to sort of review our fund balance or our our savings accounts here. We have been significantly growing our unassigned fund balance was right at that four percent mark this year. And that included being able to transfer money into our um restricted and assigned fund balances. Um to start to build up those savings account, to build it up to those pre-COVID numbers. You could see the increase in our audited twenty twenty four fund balance, our twenty twenty five. Just using the same metrics that we presented last year at this time, we were. Um we're we're looking at a three point three two percent unassigned unrestricted. This time last year for the twenty twenty four, we were projecting a two point eight two percent. So using those metrics, I I would say highly anticipate that we will still be able to continue to increase. Both our assigned fund balances and our unassigned fund balances to have a healthy savings account moving forward. And how and re- remain having healthy balance sheets. So I I do think it's really important to look at how the district's fiscal responsibility. With its tax levy as compared to the what the state gives us as the inflation factor has been substantially below that. Um we have significantly absorbed a lot of the pieces that have been rising due to inflation. Both to allocating unrestricted fund balance, other financial tools that the district has has used. Um and as well as just keeping costs down and changing the way that we do things. So um we really have been doing a good job and I intend that for the next budget, we'll be able to do that as well and keep costs down.
So we just wanted to just break for a minute and ask the board if there's anything specifically you want us to be thinking about. As we start to prepare our presentations for you. Um outside of like the traditional way that we've been sharing information through each component about how we've been budgeting. Or or you can email us. We just, this is like a a moment where there's specific things you want to see addressed. We we are uh. Ready to take feedback now or we can certainly take feedback over the next two months.
We know how to get in touch.
Yes, okay, right. All right, and so then at the calendar system, let me just, all right, so here's our budget preview. And then on March fifth, we're going to present our recommended budget. And then we will have presentations throughout March and then there'll be an opportunity on the twenty fourth through a Zoom. Where parents um can ask questions and and uh provide feedback to us other than public comment. And then uh if everything uh proceeds as planned, on the twenty sixth, we would have a budget in front of you. For adoption consideration. And then in April and May, I will again hold meetings in each building for parents to come and talk with Josh and I. And if the board would like to uh join me in the way that we've been doing in the fall. To give people an opportunity, not only to ask questions and talk about the budget, but also any other questions that they feel like they want to talk about, which is what is happening right now, which has been great. And then uh on the seventh is the hearing and then on the twentieth will be the budget vote in the auditorium. And so if you have any budget comments or questions, you can start emailing us now and Josh is the point person. But of course, we're all available um to take your feedback or to answer your questions throughout the process. So just want to thank everyone. I want to thank Josh and that is the end of the superintendent's report. So thank you.
Okay, um next up is committee reports. And I'm looking at my colleagues to see who's got a committee report to share. I have one, which is facilities, but uh. Looking across, okay. Alyssa, do you want to go first?
Sure, um I'm the CSF liaison, so I just want to report about. The ongoing things. You already heard about the Instagrams this month, which is exciting. And just to remind people that the um fundraising initiatives are ongoing. There is going to be the dad's, the dad's day out, the dad's brunch, so I'm hoping you guys are signing up for that. And um the wizard tickets that are being sold and then gearing up for the event at Goosefeathers in the spring. And uh just keep keeping an eye on what CSF is doing and and all the good things that they're providing for the school with the Instagrams every month. It's really exciting and um hope to see people at one of those events.
Alright, so I can speak to uh the electric bus task force. And Josh, please correct me if I'm getting any of this incorrectly. But um so we learned that there there's a decent amount of funding out there to fund. I guess basically feasibility studies and we've looked at, obviously, you know, we had Ross here talking about our our transportation generally. But a key component of electric busing is the electric part. Um and that has posed a challenge for a lot of districts that have started this process and it's posed the challenge in, you know, just. We've all observed sort of the town putting in electric chargers and how long they can take to get online and all those things that are beyond anybody's control. So we are looking into contracting to get a study done that will be at minimal to no cost to the district. Um to look at electric capabilities at various sites. What happens if we keep all the buses at the current bus garage? Do we need to look into potentially not doing that? Where are our sites that there may be, um it may be easier and faster and cheaper to electrify versus others? So we're um we're going to be contracting for that study, which should cost the district nothing. Um we may have to outlay a little bit of money, but we will get that money reimbursed. But there is money to cover all of this and that accomplishes two things. First of all, it gets us the information we need. Second of all, we can also check that box that we are taking meaningful steps towards pursuing electric bus.
Right, which allows us to buy more time if we need it later.
We don't know, but we need to do this. Um and it should, what it really should allow us to do is then go back to the state with concrete concerns if we have them. Like if it says this is going to be easy, ridiculously expensive, but easy, go ahead, then we know how to proceed. If there are real barriers to entry, um like if we really have trouble locating sites where we could put in the kind of charging capabilities that we need. Um then that's something that we can take back to the state and say, listen, here are some some key sticking points. Alyssa and I did an excellent job coming up with basically everything that could go wrong. I think we might have scared the consultant a little bit in our ability to um project out worst case possibilities. Like the school loses power, which we all know can happen. Um so that's where we're at with electric busing and we're also um talking as a committee about how. Other things we should be looking at while we do it. So should we be looking at solar while we're looking at electrification and all of those sort of um. Concurrent potential projects so that we're not doing something and then three years later going, oh, we should have done that at the same time.
And the other piece is to add on to what Hillary said about finding out different scenarios and running more than one analysis at a time. Um because, you know, do we need midday charging? Do we not need midday charging? To Hillary's point, if there's a snow day or an emergency dismissal in the middle of the day and we're relying on midday charging. Then we need to go to get the kids home with an unexpected midday departure. So there's just a lot of, you know, things that can go wrong and right now the technology on electric buses is a little bit unknown. And Hillary tells me that her electric car, if it's cold out, goes less far, it gets cranky. So there's a lot to piece out of um whether or not, you know, we have the infrastructure in various spots. And then once we have that, um the other pieces of actually running the buses themselves. So we're on it.
Matt, you do not have one, right? Yeah, and Kaylee, no?
No, I actually, um so we had the scholarship fund um meeting last Wednesday. And um the main thing that I'm going to just again shout out to January twenty fourth, the winter ball. The last I heard, they have sold six hundred tickets. I'm not sure exactly what the capacity is, but that's a lot of people in the gym that's going to be dancing the night away. Um it's K through four, um six P M. Buy your tickets if you haven't because we cannot accommodate. If you forget. We cannot help you, so please, please, it's for a good cause and um it's really cute. I went last year. They're going to have great raffle prizes um for auction, well, not auction, raffled out. And um it's 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 just a fun night for any special adult and a child that's in K to four. It doesn't have to be a mom or a dad. It could be a grandparent, it could be an uncle, it could be an aunt, but. Yeah, but you can't come alone as an adult. You can't buy a ticket and come because we will be checking for that.
Can a fourth grader come alone?
No. Um so, um and then we had a policy meeting, but we had to be in executive session, so there's nothing to report on.
Okay, um and facilities committee met, uh had the second meeting of the year. And uh pleased to share that it's seems like it's full speed ahead with a lot of the pieces that we're expecting to happen. And that we've done a nice job of maintaining the sort of uh, I'll call it the buffer fund. So account for things that will need change orders and all of that. So it it feels like we're pretty nicely on track and we're going to start to see more activity here in the spring. Once some of the contracts that Josh mentioned earlier are actually executed and and teams start working. So excited to see all those plans get into action over this uh spring and summer. And I don't know that there's a lot more to say than that. Like we're starting to think about a ten year plan out. Uh we didn't have a ton of time to talk about that if I remember from the meeting this last time, but Josh, did I forget anything that you think is worth mentioning here? Yeah, no, yeah, okay.
The one thing I did want to add was that um speaking about the bus, we had a member in our facilities committee. Who I hope he was invited to the bus committee.
Yeah, so I had a conversation with him on the side before that about that. And uh and he's part of the facility committee and is happy to give advice to us as needed.
Okay.
Terrific. Okay, uh that does it for committee reports and it's now time for the public comment period. We welcome public comments and in respect for each other's time, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Board members may be contacted via email or phone. After the public comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion amongst themselves regarding comments presented. And uh just again to remind people to try not, try to identify yourself before you speak. And uh we look forward to hearing what you have to say.
Uh so Jeremy Ween, um I have a third grader at West Orchard, uh an incoming kindergartner uh next year. Um just want to to comment on on Ross's study and and specifically um on the Princeton Plan idea. And uh and and having uh fifth and sixth separate from seventh and eighth and maybe uh as a backup to that. If it's not possible, uh Matt's idea of going back to um, you know, fifth graders in the elementary schools. Basically with the with the key um focus being not having uh fifth graders and eighth graders together. And obviously the farther apart they can be, fifth from seventh, et cetera, um being preferable. Um it it seems like there are obviously some logistical hassles, although there were also some administrative offsets. Um but I think that the the most important thing, uh because it doesn't seem like, or at least he didn't indicate that there would be a substantial cost. Um I just want to talk about some of the the kind of the risks and why I think that is 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 so important. And I've obviously uh spoken with a lot of other parents about this. If it would be helpful for the board uh to memorialize that in some sort of, you know. Call it petition, call it a, you know, sign thing, whatever. I'm sure we can get plenty of people, um you know, who would who would agree with that and and make sure you have that uh, you know, formally. Um and and one other thing I want to add is that I have heard from everyone that they do a really good job inside the buildings of keeping the kids separate. That's great. Um it's the other parts that that concern me and I and I know a lot about people, um for example, on the buses. Um and you know, in L, for example, going, you know, going to town afterwards, um you know, there's no way to keep kids uh from interacting on the bus. And we don't want to keep them from interacting on the bus. We want them to make friends with new people, to interact outside of their classes, outside of their social circles. With people who live near them, who they might uh, you know, play with on a on a snow day or carpool with the Greeley later or whatever it is. Um but when they're unsupervised like that, again, fifth and eighth graders, the types of things that they could talk about, there's no way to to prevent that. And and having them um exposed to each other uh just feels like um something that we should try to avoid if we can. Um and and the same goes for, you know, going into town afterwards. I I didn't mention, so I I went to, went through this this school system and uh, hi, Castilla. I uh it's been a long time. Faculty advisor for uh for, you know, newspaper spiked many, many attempted columns. Um and so um uh rightfully so, um and so anyway, um where was I? Um so the point is that I I I loved going into into town after school. Um I, those were some of the great times that that we had as kids. They're, you know, they're just, they're they're different interactions than you have in every other aspect of your life at that point. Um and and we want that, but again, you know, a lot's changed. It's been twenty five or maybe almost thirty years since I was doing that. Um but a lot hasn't changed, right? There were eighth graders that were smoking cigarettes behind squires and I guarantee there are eighth graders that smoke cigarettes, you know, in town these days. And there were eighth grade boys trying to talk to sixth grade girls and I'm sure that still happens. And there were eighth grade girls bullying sixth grade girls and I'm sure that still happens. And the difference is that it's all so much easier now with cell phones, with social media, to have a short connection become.
If you if you just pause for a minute, I can ask for a motion for an additional minute.
If I could get sixty seconds, that would be.
Yeah, so just hold on. Can I have a motion for one additional minute?
I move.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you, I appreciate it. Sorry, it doesn't seem like it'll be that long whenever.
A procedural thing we have to do.
Yep, I appreciate it. Um so just to try to cut the chase a little bit, you know, I think it should really be focused on the kids specifically. And by the way, again, I I come for this, it's not like a puritanical approach of of like these kids, you know, what kids may may do, may talk about, et cetera. Um but you know, Russ mentioned, I I wrote this quote down when he was talking about the caramel study he did. He said, when when he was talking about moving the fifth graders away from that, he said, every argument uh in the world uh educationally supports that. So if that means that the arguments for are for educational and social development and all that, and the arguments against are transportation and logistics and maybe a little bit of money. Um that seems like a no brainer to me. Uh just what are we prioritizing? And I think prioritizing social development, health, mental and physical of our kids, uh you know, would be the no brainers there. So anyway, thank you.
Um, I have a happy first grader at West Orchard. Thank you so much for giving me the chance to share my thoughts. We are here tonight on behalf of families in this town who are aggrieved, disenchanted, and deeply disappointed by the district's decision to remove Young Palestinian Speak Living Under Occupation from middle school libraries last year. You'll hear more about this book tonight, but for now, I'll share how the respected publisher, Simon and Schuster, describes it. This book provides a platform for children and young people from all over Palestine's occupied land to speak in their own voices about the day-to-day experiences of living under occupation. As you read their words, you will see that what these young people want is a stable family life, security where they live, the freedom to move around their country, safety and space in which to grow up and dream of a future. They are just like young people everywhere. It is only the circumstances of their life that are so different. End quote. The district claims this book is not banned, arguing that it remains accessible in high schools, yet restricting it from middle schools is a clear act of censorship. Pan America addresses this exact scenario in its FAQ. What if access to a book is restricted? It asks. Their response is unequivocal. Restricting access constitutes a ban. When a book previously deemed appropriate for middle school libraries, accessible to a middle school student, is removed, it denies that student the opportunity that was otherwise there to read it, a choice made for them by administrators and not librarians. So let's not pretend like this is anything else. This is a ban. And perhaps the district is reluctant to admit it because being labeled a book banning district is indeed shameful. It's embarrassing. I recently had the privilege of hearing author Renee Woxon speak to middle school students. When they asked her how she feels about her, when her books are banned, she paused and said, "I feel angry. Reading to me is a form of listening. When you ban my book, it means you refuse to even listen to what I have to say about myself." This is exactly what is happening here. Young Palestinian Speak offers an opportunity to hear, to hear directly from children's about their lives, struggles, and dreams. Regardless of your personal stance on the issue, the least we can do is listen. Listen to children who are not unlike our own, children who wish to play, to learn, to dream, and to live. Tonight, as a community, we urge you to reflect on the harm caused by this decision. Let's choose to uplift curiosity, compassion, and understanding over censorship. Tonight, you will hear letters from the community, a letter from authors of the book, a letter to CCSD from Pan America, and a letter to the Board of Ed signed by advocacy. Can I have just like 30 seconds?
So again, we'll just have to ask if there are motion to grant for an additional minute.
I'll move.
Second. All in favor? Good. Please continue.
And a letter to the Board of Ed signed by advocacy organizations across the country. Thank you for ta- taking the time to hear us.
Good evening Superintendent Ackerman, members of the board, and everyone here tonight. My name is Alia Kumsani, and I have an incoming child into kindergarten. Like many others, I chose this community for its reputation as a place of inclusivity and excellence in education. I'm here tonight as a mother of a Palestinian child to lend my voice in opposition to the removal of Young Palestinian Speak from the middle school library. This book, as I understand, was chosen as part of Arab American Heritage Month and offers a window into the lived experiences of Palestinian youth in Gaza, the West Bank, and Jerusalem. It is a work intended to broaden horizons and foster empathy, qualities that are essential in any community that values diversity and critical thinking. Removing it is not just about one book. It sends a message that certain voices and stories are unwelcome here. For my child and for other childrens of, uh, other children of diverse backgrounds, this exclusion undermines their sense of belonging and tells them that their identities are somehow unworthy or too controversial. Some may argue that this book is not appropriate for middle school because global issues are typically taught in high school. However, middle school is precisely when students begin forming the critical thinking skills and empathy, empathy that they need to understand complex issues. We already introduce them to difficult topics like slavery, the civil rights movement, the Holocaust, and other social justice topics. These lessons encourage students to reflect on injustice, resilience, and the importance of equity and fairness. Similarly, Young Palestinian Speak gives students an age-appropriate opportunity to explore perspectives that broaden their understanding of the world. Moreover, a simple search of the middle school library catalog for books pertaining to Palestine indicates that Palestinian, the Palestinian perspective is severely underrepresented. There are only approximately 14 books in the catalog representing roughly half of the current available books discussing Israel. Who's to say that these books won't also be targeted and removed next? This imbalance makes the removal of this book even more troubling as it further marginalizes an already overlooked perspective. Restricting access to this book limits students' intellectual curiosity and sends a message that not, that only certain narratives are acceptable. America is the land of the free, the Free Amendment guarantees freedom of speech and expression, and banning books undermines this cornerstone of democracy. It's not only un-American but also reminiscent of practices by governments or countries that do not hold American values of liberty and open discourse. Banning books risks dividing our community and jeopardizing the values that make this district a sought-after place to live. It risks creating a culture that avoids difficult conversations instead of embracing them. I urge you to reinstate this book for all students in our district. Education should inspire courage, resilience, and the ability to think critically about and debate complex issues, even if those topics are deemed controversial. Let's send a message to all our children that their voices matter and their stories belong here. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Good evening, Dr. Ackerman, members of the board. My name is Miriam. I have three children, three boys. I have a high school freshman, a sixth grader at Seven Bridges, and a third grader at Worringbrook. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak tonight, and I am here to speak on behalf of myself, my children, and my family. I speak, uh, on behalf of no one else but myself. I'm here to share a letter that was written to Dr. Ackerman and the board on June 15th, 2024, from the authors of Young Palestinian Speak Living Under Occupation. Dear Dr. Ackerman, it has come to our notice that our book, Young Palestinian Speak Living Under Occupation, has been subject to removal from the Seven Bridges Middle School Library on the grounds that the context could not be understood by that age group and that our intent and perspective is unknown. We strongly disagree with that assessment of the cognitive abilities of most children in that age group. In relation to our intent and perspective, we write books and conduct seminars for the purpose of giving a voice to the voiceless. We all want to have a voice. Having one means we matter, and we all want to matter, nothing more, nothing less. That is what we have done in this book. We present what we found on the ground in Palestine. To this end, we visited Palestine four times between 2013 and 2016 to guarantee that what we reported back on was what we saw and heard and was not secondhand. The book was written for ages 10 to 16 and upwards. There is something for everyone interested in this conflict, adults included. The language and the concepts are clear and simply put, as are the voices of those quoted in the book. The many reviews of the book attest to the accessibility of the language and of the concepts. We think that to deny access to this age group is wrong, and it makes no sense, not least for pedagogical reasons, excuse me. It is also true that children are fascinated by the lives of other children in other cultures. This is our experience of working in the field for so long, and Anthony's own experience of traveling through Soviet Russia in 1973. Why deny them an opportunity to quench this thirst? And this portion is from the other author, Anthony. Anthony, I left Japan after a year and traveled on the Trans-Siberian Express through Soviet Russia to Europe. I was a very young man, and many memories remain of this trip, but one of the most profound was the desperate thirst that all of those ordinary Russians we had met was, had for information, information about how we all lived in our various countries. These were rarely political queries. They were about our day-to-day lives. I had to draw them a rough map of the world to show them Australia, where I come from. They thought it was Austria and had only rudimentary notions of geography beyond Eastern Europe. Denying the young access to books, especially those about current events like the Israel-Palestine conflict, is to deny them knowledge and a space to think. May I ask, may I ask the board, please, for additional time?
I, I can ask for a motion for up to one more minute. So, uh, can I have a motion for one additional minute?
I'll move.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you so much. Denying the young access to books, especially those about current events like the Israel-Palestine conflict, is to deny them knowledge and a space to think. It's denying their value of freedom of thought, a very dangerous road to go down. Children are sponges. They can be unduly influenced by one-sided arguments, or they can be given the dignity of being allowed to decide for themselves. Surely, this is a manifestation of freedom. Fear of knowledge runs through human history, as do attempts to suppress knowledge, attempts which only work short-term in any case. The constant, the consequences of any suppression can be dire. When a middle school student searches Seven Bridges, middle school student searches books under Israel, 31 books are displayed, including books on history. A search under Palestine reveals eight, only two of which represent Palestinian voices with humanity and dignity. This is an imbalance that should red, that should send red flags for educators. However, this does not appear to be the case. Another purpose of our book is to stimulate discussion. Yes, thank you. Thank you for your time this evening.
Hi, my name is Sarah. I have two children in the district, one at high school and one at West Orchard. I'm going to continue, uh, to complete the reading of that letter from the authors. Another purpose of our book is to stimulate discussion. It is hard to stimulate discuss, discussion if the overwhelming weight of material is about one side in the conflict. It seems you have no objections to the middle school students reading the one-sided accounts. Are you really afraid that the children's unfamiliarity with the context will render the material confusing? Why not let the children decide and help them if they need it? As authors, we have striven to present a comprehensive and honest look at the lives of ordinary Palestinian young people caught up in an extraordinary struggle, not of their making. They want their voices to be heard. Canceling the platform for a discussion out of a fear that the young will ask questions is invidious. Finally, we think it would have been a matter of courtesy to speak to the authors prior to your decision to remove the book from the middle school eyes. Yours sincerely, signed Anthony Robinson and Anne Marie Young on 13 June 2024 in Cambridge, UK. There were, uh, copies to Andrew Castilia, Assistant Superintendent, the Board of Ed, and Chapua. Thank you for your time.
Hello, everybody. My name is Stacy Morgan, and I will be reading a statement from a fellow parent, Robert Grossman. Um, and, um, he, um, sent this email at the time of the book ban review. Uh, dear Superintendent Ackerman, my name is Robert Grossman, and my oldest daughter is a happy third grader, and my youngest is going to be starting kindergarten there next fall. First of all, I want to tell you, I think you're doing a great job. One of the reasons we moved here is for the reputation of the school system as being a supportive, empathetic, and effective place for my children to learn, and we have not been disappointed. I was disturbed to learn, however, that the book, Young Palestine Speak, has been removed from the bookshelves of a middle school pending a review. I am a secular Jew and value the opportunity for open, tolerant, and challenging discourse, and would like to lend my voice in opposition to any move to remove this book pending its review. It is time to put it back on the shelf. The book seems designed to give the perspective of the Palestinian kids and how they deal with indignities of their situation written in an age-appropriate manner. I personally think that is a moral good to give our children multiple perspectives on different cultures as a way to create empathy. I know the criteria of parents who complained about the book say that it is a bias against Israel, for instance, noting that it refers to the West Bank and Gaza as occupied territories. However, our own State Department refers to these areas as occupied territories, but that wouldn't be a basis to ban a speaker from the State Department. And even if it does portray one, what one side would call a biased perspective, that is not a reason to ban a book. One of the goals of an overall education and the strength of Chappaqua school system is to challenge students to consider and debate sometimes uncomfortable topics. It leads not only to better, better criti, uh, critical thinking skills, but also greater empathy. I know tempers have flared all over the country and this community, but banning books is not a way to handle the situation. I don't know if it is the majority of town, but there's certainly been a vocal group on the pro-Israel side of this community. This has led to very frank and substantial discomfort on the part of Arab and Muslim members of our community, of our community, as well as others who share a more critical view of the situation. For instance, I'm aware of one Muslim family that has decided to leave town due to what they see as an unempathetic and intolerant viewpoint on the part of the town and the school district. Banning this book will make things worse and cause an even greater rift. This will cause not only short-term ramifications to the diversity and tolerance that makes this community great, but longer-term ones as well. Short-term, if a, if the book is banned, it may lead to unflattering comparisons of other school districts to, um, to more intolerant school dis, our school district to more intolerant school districts. Longer-term, I am sure you don't want to, oh. Do I have to ask for more? Like Oliver, like in the movie?
I, I was fumbling with my button on my microphone. I apologize. Can we have a motion for an additional minute for the speaker?
I'll move.
Second. All in favor?
Okay. Longer-term, I am sure you, uh, you don't want the district to get the reputation as a place that bans books. Um, not only will this, uh, make this town a censorless, tolerant place to live, but not an attractive place to move. I know you're in a tough place with what's happening with the slaughter that's happened on October 7th and the slaughter that is happening in Gaza right now. It is fraught and an uncomfortable topic, but I trust that you, uh, you know, as an educator, that the way to deal with uncomfortable topics is not to ban them, but to meet them head-on and educate our students in a way that challenges them. Perhaps the better way than to remove the book from display is to display a book about Israeli youths and perspective. Thank you for your consideration in reading this email. Best, Robert Bobby Grossman Esquire. Thank you very much for your time.
Uh, my name is Farqanda. Uh, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. I stand here today not just to protest the banning of a book, but to defend the very principles that make education meaningful, the free exchange of ideas, the exposure of diverse perspectives, and the courage to engage with the world as it is, not as we wish it to be. The book that has been banned, Young Palestinian Speak Living Under Occupation, gives us a window into lives that are often unseen, unheard, and misunderstood. It offers personal stories of young people who are living through a conflict that has shaped the reality in ways most of us cannot fully imagine. By hearing their voices, we're invited to understand, not to judge, uh, but to empathize and not to condemn. And this is precisely what education should do. Why are we afraid of these stories? Is it because they challenge us to confront uncomfortable truths? Is it because they push us to see the world through the eyes of others, perhaps in ways that may conflict with our own understanding? These are not reasons to ban a book, they're reasons to read a book. We do not grow by shielding ourselves from perspectives that are different from our own. We grow by embracing them, by questioning them, by engaging them in thoughtful and open discussions. To ban this book is to deny our students the opportunity to develop a deeper understanding of one of the most important conflicts of our time. It is to close off their access to voices that are too often silenced, ignored, or forgotten. But what about the children in this school district, in this town, who identify with the young Palestinians? The students who see their own lives, their own struggles mirrored in these stories? Are we to silence them? Are we to push their experiences and viewpoints to the back of the library, out of sight, out of mind, out of middle school? This town is not the same as it was years ago. Its demographic, demographics have shifted, becoming more diverse and quite frankly, more vibrant. And our school board must recognize that with this diversity comes a responsibility to reflect the needs and voices of all of our students. Every child deserves to see themselves represented, to feel heard, and to know that their stories matter. A curriculum that only represents a single narrative does a disservice to our evolving community and to the very values of inclusivity and understanding that we should be fostering. In a world that is increasingly divided, and it is more important than ever to encourage empathy. empathy, to teach critical thinking, and to foster a sense of global citizenship, banning Young Palestinians Speak sends a message that some perspectives are too uncomfortable to be heard and that some stories... May I ask for another? Less than a minute.
Again, can I have a motion for an additional minute for the speaker?
I move.
Second. All in favor? Okay. All opposed? No? Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. Banning Young Palestinians Speak sends a message that some perspectives are too uncomfortable to be heard and that some stories are too dangerous to be told. But that is now what education is about. Education is about courage and the courage to face difficult truths, the courage to engage with the full complexity of our world, and the courage to listen to those who lived through experiences different from our own. To those who support this ban, I ask, what are we afraid of? The stories of young people living under occupation, not a threat to us, they're an opportunity, a chance to understand the world more fully, to empathize with the human struggle for dignity and peace, and to engage in conversations that matter. If we allow fear or discomfort to dictate our students, how will they learn? Books like Young Palestinians Speak are precisely what our students need to read. They need to be challenged, to be pushed to think critically, to question, and to grow into informed and compassionate citizens of the world. Silence of these voices will not protect our students. Thank you. Thank you so much.
My name is Arthur Grant. I live in Chappaqua. My kids went through the school system here, K through 12, and I'm showing my age by having paper and not reading from a phone. I'm going to read a letter that was sent from PEN America to Dr. Ackerman on October 8th of last year. Dear Chappaqua School Superintendent Ackerman, PEN America is a nonprofit organization standing at the intersection of literature and human rights to protect open expression in the United States and worldwide. For the past three years, we have been documenting the surge in efforts to restrict access to books in schools across the country. As advocates for the freedom to read, we are writing to urge you to return Young Palestinians Speak by Anne Marie Young and Anthony Robinson to your middle school libraries. As we understand it, Young Palestinians Speak was available in a middle school library the last school year, but became the subject of controversy when it was included in a library display in April for Arab American Heritage Month. After a complaint from a community member, the title was not only removed from the display, but also prohibited from being accessed by students while it was under review. A decision was later made to remove the book from the middle school library entirely, restricting it solely to the Horace Greeley High School Library. These choices have had the regrettable effect of diminishing access to this title for middle school students in the district, the precise students for whom the book is recommended, grades four through six. Access to diverse stories and representative literature makes a difference in the lives of all students, and it is especially concerning that this choice was made during Arab American Heritage Month, an opportune time for Palestinian voices to be heard, not censored. In PEN America's definition, a school book ban occurs when an objection to the content of a book leads to that volume being withdrawn, either fully or partially, from availability. Book bans can be both permanent and temporary. When titles are aged up to older grades as a result of these complaint processes, they are no longer available to the intended readers and those most likely to engage with the content. We identify this as banned by restriction. PEN America understands the tremendous pressure that has been placed on school districts across the country to scrutinize their library collections. But this pressure does not relieve districts of their responsibility to follow neutral, established processes. Okay. Could I have another 30 seconds?
Sure. Can I have a motion for an additional minute?
I'll move.
All in favor? Okay. You can proceed.
But this pressure does not relieve districts of their responsibility to follow neutral, established processes when such complaints arise. Review policies must be followed, and processes should be clear and transparent. We also advocate that access to books not be suspended while review processes are underway, precisely because doing so deprives students of their freedom to read and can give a single objector or small minority the ability to control access to books for all for an indeterminate period of time. The purpose of a school library is to inform, to facilitate voluntary inquiry, and to support learning and literacy for all. We are encouraged that the Chappaqua Central School District includes within its policies the ALA, the American Library Association's School Library Bill of Rights, and that, quote, "Students have a right to free..." Sorry. Was that it? Okay. Thank you.
My name is Danny Peterson. I have a first grader in the district. To the members of the Chappaqua Central School District of Education, we, the undersigned advocacy organizations and authors, are writing to urge you to reverse your ban of Young Palestinians Speak and return the title to your middle school libraries. As we understand it, Young Palestinians Speak was available in Chappaqua Central School District middle school libraries for several school years, but became the subject of controversy this year when it was included in a library display in April for Arab American Heritage Month. We are aware that since then, the book has been moved from middle school libraries to the district high school, effectively banning the book from middle school students in the district. PEN America's definition of a book ban states, "A school book ban occurs when objection to the content of a book leads to the volume being withdrawn either fully or partially from availability." Book bans can be both permanent and temporary. When titles are aged up to older graders, elder grades, as a result of these complaint processes, they are no longer available to the intended readers and those most likely to engage with the content. The book is thus banned for the readers who were once able to access it. As listed in PEN America's 2023-2024 Banned Books Index, we categorize Young Palestinians Speak as banned by restriction in Chappaqua schools. As authors and advocates concerned with free expression and young people's access to literature, we know access to diverse stories and representative literature makes a difference in the lives of all students. Children's literature expert Dr. Rudine Sims Bishop once said, "Literature transforms the human experience and reflects it back to us. And in that reflection, we can see our own lives and experiences as part of the larger human experience." We find it especially concerning that this book was removed from libraries during Arab American Heritage Month, an opportune time for Palestinian voices to be heard, not censored. As signatories of this letter, we represent a diverse group of authors and experts working on supporting free expression and young people's access to literature that opens hearts, minds, and doors. Forms of suppression and censorship of ideas at the behest of some ideologies or viewpoints threatens the freedom to read and puts students' opportunity to feel seen or learn about difference and jeopardy, things needed now more than ever. We urge you to review and revise your actions regarding Young Palestinians Speak. This will protect and respect the rights of all students and parents in your community and support the district's library professionals who facilitate students' freedom to read and learn every day. The middle school students of... May I please have one minute?
Can I have a motion for an additional minute?
I do.
Second. All in favor?
The middle school students of Chappaqua Central School District deserve access to diverse literature like Young Palestinians Speak, the same as they have had for years. Books aren't harmful, censorship is. Signed. Organizational signatories, PEN America, Interlink Publishing, Authors Against Book Bans, National Coalition Against Censorship, New York Civil Liberties Union. Author signatories, Anthony Robinson and Anne Marie Young, authors of Young Palestinians Speak, Maggie Takota Hall, author of Love in the Library Squad, and more. Adib Corum, author of Darius the Great is Not Okay. Ashley Shesley, author of Child of the Dragon. Alex Iharo, author of Starling House. T.J. Alexander, author of Chef's Kiss. Eves, author of Something's Not Right. Anne Zhou, author of Dear Wendy. Sarah McLean, author of Knockout. Sidney Langford, author of The Loud Silence. Nino Capri, author of Dead Girls, Don't Dream, Finna, Defect, and Homesick. Kezi Young, author... Sorry if I butchered your names.
Thank you.
Should I share some information?
Yeah, I was gonna say, do you wanna clarify anything that we heard tonight?
Yeah, so first of all, I appreciate everyone coming and speaking tonight and sharing their position on a decision that we made and I communicated to the entire district last May, and I think I should revisit what I shared in that communication. First, because it talks about the process that we used to get to a place where it was decided that the book would be moved to Horace Greeley High School. So I just want to revisit something that was sent out to everyone in the community last May. We didn't hear any feedback after that, so after the meeting, I would like to hear why at this moment people are choosing to come forward and share information with us. So I'll certainly, if people are able to stay, I would like to understand that a little bit better. But last May, I sent out, you know, in the past few weeks, we heard concerns about a book that was housed at Seven Bridges Library. This book was not at Bell, Young Palestinians Speak. And these concerns centered on the content of the book as well as the potential censorship of library materials. A team of middle school and professional development faculty read the book and considered the complaints received under our board policy 4005. Upon review, it was determined that the author presents a viewpoint that requires a foundational understanding of author intent and perspective. There is also historical context which middle school students are less likely to have when compared with our high school students. And given these considerations, Young Palestinians Speak was moved to the high school library. And that followed our process. And what I'm hearing in public comment tonight is for us to go outside our board policy and make a different decision that was an outcome of a process that was really clear. And so I have some concerns about that. But I do understand the advocacy. I also want to share that I held six meetings with parents in each building and talked about this in April, and there was a lot of understanding about the position that we were in, and there wasn't a level of advocacy that we're hearing tonight around the decision. They just... The advocacy was around having a thoughtful process, which I do think that we have in place. And this decision didn't make it up to the building principal, the administration at the board. It was really decided that the faculty leveled that this was the most appropriate decision. And then I think I should just share, the book has been here since 2018, and it wasn't checked out until last year at the middle level. It was checked out twice. Since it's been at the high school, it's been checked out once by students. And so I just want to share that as just information, so you can understand the volume of usage. I'm not saying that for any other reason, but I just want to make sure the board fully understands the context of how that book has been read here in the district. And also that it's accessible to more students now that it's at Greeley because it wasn't accessible to a group of students at Bell at any point in time. So these are just things I think we should know, they're facts. But I also, you know, I know that people don't agree with the decision, but I feel like the decision was grounded in a really strong process. And so I want to go back to, you know, when we have curriculum challenges, it's important that we anchor in our process and we anchor in our faculty to make strong recommendations for our students around the materials that they're exposed to. And there was no exception to that within this process. And so that's what I'd like to share with the board.
Christine, outside of the process, I think it's also, I mean, I don't know how much you do want to share, but you did have communication with the author. And, I mean, it's not like you summarily made a decision and had no attempted, you know, interaction with her.
Well, yeah, I would like to say, I know people are reading letters tonight that have been, that were sent to me, and depending on who authored those letters, there were interactions between me and the people who contacted me. And I do appreciate that tonight in any of the comments, there were no questions around my responsiveness to the correspondence that I received. I think what I'm hearing is that people don't agree with this decision, and they'd like me, the board, to reverse a decision that was grounded in a process that was anchored in our faculty. That's what I'm hearing. And so, and I respect that position, but I also, you know, we have pedagogical members of our team that are making recommendations based on their experience and their expertise. And I'd like to respect that process that we followed and the decision that was made.
So with that, I think we're ready to move to item three on the agenda, which is approvals and ratifications. 3.1 is to accept the minutes of the December 11th, 2024 meeting. Can I have a motion to accept those minutes?
I move.
Second. All of those in favor? Aye.
I recommend instructional 4.1 as presented.
I'll move 4.1. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend 4.2, non-instructional, as presented.
Can I have a motion for 4.2?
I'm in motion.
Second. Any discussion? All of those in favor? Great. That moves us to the consent agenda. Use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the following consent agenda items as submitted by the superintendent. So we've got the typical CSE summaries, we've got lots of contracts pursuant to the discussion we had earlier with Josh about the Capitol projects. Does anyone... Well, let me move first, or let me see, does anyone have anything that they want to vote on separately tonight? No? Okay. So then, can I have a motion for 5.1 through 5.23? I'll move. Anybody want to talk about anything? Yes, Hillary.
Josh, can you sort of summarize for the community what you sent to us in the email regarding 5.22, because I think it's kind of confusing, just in case anybody actually is looking at this and confused by it.
This is the greenhouse item.
Yeah, so New York State has competitive bidding procedures. There are specific cooperatives that adhere to those New York State competitive bidding procedures that we are permitted to participate in with board resolution. We have been looking to get a complex company to maintain our high school greenhouse. The competitive bidding process that that company participates in is the Virginia Association of State College/University Purchasing Professionals. So that company, Prosperian, maintains the greenhouses at Virginia Tech. So in order to access them at rates that are favorable and to be within New York State regulation, we need to pass a resolution to be able to participate in that cooperative.
Very concisely done. Thank you. Any other question of any of these other items? Okay? All those in favor? Aye. That brings us to item six. This is where we acknowledge receipt of the following contracts approved by the superintendent per the board policy 6085. We just have one tonight, 6.1. Can I have a motion acknowledging receipt of the Chappaqua Continuing Education Winter Instructor Contracts?
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Nothing under seven, which leaves us with number eight, financials. Maybe we can take 8.1 and 8.2 together, acknowledging receipt of the Claims Auditors Report for November 2024 and the Claims Auditors Report for December 2024. Can I have a motion for those two items? I'll move. Wow, everybody wants to have that one.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Great. Notice of future meetings. We'll be together, as Dr. Ackerman said, this Thursday at 1 o'clock for a work session about the International Baccalaureate Program. That's right here. And then we'll be back for our next evening public meeting, Tuesday, January 28th, at 7:00. And the next one after that... at seven, and the next one after that is February twelfth at seven. And at that, I can have a motion to adjourn at eight-twenty-five.
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor? All right. Thank you very much, everybody. Bye.